To answer, and all candidates will have an equal time to speak to the question. And then for the closing statements, each candidate will have two minutes. Our timekeeper tonight is Don Jacoberger. He's here in the front row. He'll hold up warning signs when the candidate has one minute left, then 30 seconds left of the allotted time. The end of the time, he'll hold up the stop sign until the candidate quits speaking. We do let you finish your sentence, though. So, questions from the audience will be in writing, and the ushers have cards for you to write down your questions. And our ushers this evening are Karen Bertrand and Afshun Shadar. They're League members as well. So if you need pencil or paper, raise your hand. If you haven't already picked up a card in the back, I'm going to ask you to please write legibly and to keep your questions brief. I will not ask questions of a personal nature or anything that has personal invective in it. So just keep that in mind as you write your questions. And when you have your question written and you need a usher to pick it up, just raise your hand and someone will come and get that and bring the questions to the moderator. All questions come to the moderator. I sort the questions by subject, and I try to cover a variety of subjects. So we very seldom, I can tell you right now, we never have time to ask all the questions. So sometimes if there are several on one topic, I will rephrase the questions. You may not hear it exactly as you asked it, and I can combine questions at times. And that's the only way we can cover a variety of subjects. So the candidates have drawn lots to determine the order in which they will speak, and each candidate has three minutes for the opening statement. And our first candidate is Kay Koski.
Hello, good evening. Thank you to the League of Women Voters and our PTA Council. Thank you, Melinda Sanders, and thank all of you for coming out tonight and sharing the evening with us. We're delighted to see you. My name is Kay Koski, and I'm running for reelection to the school board. It's been my honor to serve for the past four years, which is one term. I earned my master's degree in nursing. I've worked intimately with hundreds of families to help them problem solve and navigate through difficult situations. What I learned while working with all of these families over the years is that we absolutely need to pay attention to the whole child. And also wellness needs to be a part of every conversation that we have going forward, and that includes physical, mental, and social. That's the nurse in me coming out. I joined the school board after volunteering in our district for over 10 years. I think I've put my time in. I was Franklin's PTA president, school site council, BCE director on the board of directors for two years, and I co-chaired the Franklin Carnival and co-chaired also the BCE Dinner Dance. And it was just an amazing experience to do all that volunteer work, and I would do it all over again. I felt that what I learned through team building and working well with others, with the teachers, the parents, and the principal, would bode me well for on our board. I'm running for reelection now because I feel that I have good leadership and collaborative skills that help move our district forward. As a board, we have to make thoughtful decisions, and I'm passionate about our education here. I've actually been passionate about education in Burlingame for over 24 years. My husband and I have two children who attended our public schools. One is now in the high school, and the other has matriculated to college. You might think that isn't great for me, being on the board, but I say it is. It's an asset to be on the board because I can see the whole picture, the long view. I can see the long view of where our kids are going. Tonight, I hope that we can discuss three of my top goals. One, to drive high academic achievement through STEAM and GSS and SEL. Support our teachers and staff. And try to work on our communication. And last, manage our budget to remain fiscally stable. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Koski, a second opening statement is from Douglas Luftman.
Thank you. Thank you to Burlingame's PTA Council and the League of Women's Voters for hosting this candidate forum. Thank you also to everyone in the audience tonight and those of you watching on YouTube for taking time out of your busy schedule to attend this forum. My name is Doug Luftman. I currently am a member of the Burlingame School Board, and I'm married to my high school sweetheart, Heather, who is in the second row, and we have two children, Taryn and Ryan. Taryn attended Washington and Franklin Elementary School and graduated from BAS last year. Ryan attended Franklin Elementary and currently is in sixth grade at BIS. I'm here tonight to share a bit about who I am and my vision, and hopefully to demonstrate to each of you tonight that your vote for me can really make a difference and allow me to continue to do my service on the school board for a new term. I'd like to start off this evening with a quick ask of all of you. I'd like each of you to take a moment and think about a favorite memory from elementary or middle school. How does that memory make you feel? How did that experience possibly guide you or inspire you to where you are today? Each of us has some special memories in our lives. One of mine is my sixth grade class at Cowan Avenue Elementary School in Southern California. My teacher, Mrs. Jackson, encouraged me to dream big and to share things that excited us. With her inspiration, I decided to demonstrate how I had learned to program on one of the first personal computers, where it would play musical notes as it spelled out the word "music." At the time, I felt excited on what I achieved, and a seed was planted. Later, I realized that this simple moment encouraged by Mrs. Jackson sparked my love for science, technology, engineering, arts, and mathematics. In fact, it strongly influenced me to the point where it encouraged me to pursue a career in Silicon Valley. I want to help ensure that every one of our 3,500 students have similar special experiences like you and me. I want to be part of helping further our teachers planting of those seeds and shaping the future of our next generation. The exciting thing about being on the school board is knowing that our district could be educating the very student who discovers the cure for cancer or who invents the next amazing product that revolutionizes our lives. In our school, we must further foster an environment of innovation and inspiration for the student who could become the next Einstein, Da Vinci, or Ansel Adams. All they need are the right tools and support. Right now, I could go into detail about all my credentials. However, I believe first and foremost that I'm here speaking tonight as a dad and as a parent of a Burlingame School student. We are very fortunate in this community to have over 300 passionate teachers and staff inspiring our students each day. We have a strong diversity of cultures, backgrounds, and ideas. We have a community committed to the success of our students, of our children, parents, excuse me, committed to the success of our children, for example, our parents who are on the BCE board, PTA, Dads Club, and other organizations. And we have access to incredible companies such as Genentech, Apple, Pixar, and Facebook all around us with unparalleled innovative resources that are available. This election is about selecting the right person with a proven track record and vision and the capability to represent our community on the school board for the next school term. My goal tonight is to show you that I will further enable this great district to do amazing things and prepare our children for the 21st century.
Thank you, Mr. Luftman. And our third opening statement is from Elizabeth Kendall.
Thank you to the League of Women Voters and the PTA Site Council for putting this together, and to all of you for coming and those of you who are watching online. We really appreciate it. My husband and I moved to Burlingame over a decade ago for the great schools, and I want to serve on the Burlingame School Board to make them even better. So I'd like to tell you a little bit about myself. I have a PhD in electrical engineering from Stanford. I work as an upper atmospheric research scientist. My main project right now is running a radar in Greenland. As a scientist, I am open-minded, I'm curious, I'm data-driven. I don't, I use evidence to make decisions, not anecdotes. I work collaboratively on teams, often large teams internationally, to come to a consensus. I write proposals, and I find creative solutions to often-changing budget situations. In my career, I've prioritized education outreach, and this has ranged in projects from running summer schools for graduate students to working with high school teachers in rural areas of America. I have three children in elementary school. High kids. They're in first, third, and fifth grade, and I, next year, I'll have one at BIS, and I'll span the system. I will have a child in the school system for eight more years. As a parent, I've been a dedicated volunteer. I've served at every level, from being a six-time room parent to being on the district science committee. I have served in PTA board roles, on BCE, and numerous other volunteer roles. I have the perspective of a highly involved parent who is willing to work hard to help the schools be the best that they can be. So I do have priorities for our district. First of all, I'd like to see open communication channels. I will work closely with the superintendent and the board to make sure that we have the scaffolding in place so that every voice is heard at every level. Another priority is curriculum. Right now, the next-generation science standards are being implemented, and I'm a scientist. So this is a great time to be involved in that implementation process. And as a scientist, I also know that we should reevaluate the rest of the curriculum and see what's going on. For example, I would like to take a second look at SWON Math and see if it's really still the right tool for the job. Another priority I have is teacher training and support. We need to make sure that our teachers have the resources and the tools that they need to carry out this incredibly important job that they have. And then finally, I want to ensure that we have safe, healthy facilities at all school sites. Right now, it's an exciting time because we have Measure M funds that are being spent. We need to make sure the priorities are set that meet the community's needs. So in summary, I provide a fresh perspective as the only candidate with children in elementary school. Eight more years. My science background is both useful and timely. I'm the right person for the job, and I hope I earn your vote.
Thank you. And finally, Davina Drabkin, your closing, opening statement.
Great, thank you. Thank you to the League of Women Voters, to the PTA Council, to our BHS students, to everyone who's come out tonight and is watching, and to my fellow candidates, of course. In sixth grade, I had an epiphany. It was in my science class. If I could answer all of those questions at the end of the chapter, I would do well on the test. If I could define those vocabulary words, I would do even better. Well, I want that for all of our students, and I want so much more. Yes, they need to have those basic study skills. They need to understand the foundations of math, science. They need to know how to write, and they need to make the shift from learning to read to reading to learn. I want this and so much more for our kids. It's not enough just to do the basics. I understand what our students need to be prepared for high school and beyond. I've talked with teachers, principals, educational thought leaders, and parents, hundreds of parents, almost every time I go into Lennard's or Starbucks. And I have three students who are proud graduates of BIS, this institution right here. They went to McKinley, they went to Lincoln. Right now, they're at Design Tech, a public charter school supported by Oracle. I know our BSD schools, and I have firsthand knowledge of what our kids need to be prepared for high school and beyond. I work at Stanford University, where I also earned my MBA. I develop world-renowned online education programs, and I sit at the cutting edge of educational innovation. Why is this all important? So that I can give our kids so much more. So what is that more? Well, I want to help our kids take ownership of their education. I visited a first-grade class at Roseville where the kids were asking open-ended questions. Why is the sky blue? Why do sheep sleep standing up? The teacher was helping them shape those questions and others into science projects to do in class, next-generation science standards. I want to help our kids build resilience and life skills. When they take calculus, if they get a C, will they know how to bounce back or will they give up? When they go to college, will they know how to use the washing machine in their dorm or to figure it out without texting us? I want to encourage our kids to be well-rounded and to find their passions. How about playing the trumpet? How about sports, coding, video production? In 2009, when I joined the school board, it was a time of drastic cuts, and I worked hard to keep that away from the teachers and, of course, from our students. Now, we are in a time of unparalleled innovation and opportunity. The future for our kids is bright and promising, and it is my objective to help prepare our kids to be the leaders, thinkers, and creators of tomorrow. Thank you.
Thank you. Now it's time for the candidates to answer your questions. So if you haven't written your question yet, you could do it now and raise your hand, and one of our ushers will pick up your, pick up that written question. I have quite a few up here, so I think we have a lot to start with. Now, each candidate will have one minute to answer the question. I'm going to vary the order in which the candidates are called on to speak. Is that me? Sorry about that. And it's strictly random. I do do a little chart and just mix up numbers, so there's nothing special about it. And I did these at home, not knowing who was going to start. So our first question, it's best if you don't address the questions to a specific candidate because every candidate will have an opportunity to answer every question. We have several on finances, so I think I'll start with that one. What's the biggest budget challenge facing the district, and what could you do about it? What could the board do better when it comes to the district's budget and financials? And we will start with Davina Drabkin.
Sure. Thank you. That's a very good question, and that ties into something that I have been watching vigilantly ever since I got on the board. I talked about coming in at a time of drastic cuts. So right now, the biggest issue that our district faces, and practically every other district up and down the state, is to look at our pension costs, what people might know as STIRS and PIRS. We have already had a number of increases, and it's going to be continued to increase until about 2021. This is something that we are obligated to meet the increases. So what we're doing right now is we are planning. We have constructed our budget in such a way that we know how much we need to put aside now so that we may meet these obligations going forward. What could we do to better manage? Well, that's a great question. We do a great job, and a big reason is because this community really supports education. Our foundation and the local funding measures contribute approximately 10% to 12% of our funding.
Thank you. Next, Elizabeth Kendall, question on budget.
Yes, so this is a very challenging issue. As Davina said, we have the pension amounts rising in the future, and at the same time, the local control funding formula has tapered off. So we are looking at budget challenges in the future, and it's an incredibly complicated problem, where we are going to need to have creative solutions to follow, to address this. I think it's going to take a lot of teamwork, and it's not going to be a straightforward process. So, yeah, as a new member on the board, the first thing I would do would be to listen and to find out what strategies have been done. I would also reach out to the other districts. This is not a unique problem. There are, the school boards are now operating at a county level and working together, which is a new thing and really wonderful. So there may be other resources that we could tap into and to figure out how to handle this. But it is a really challenging problem going forward.
Thank you. And next, Kay Koski.
So if you look at the budget, about 84% to 85% of it goes to our salaries for our teachers. That leaves about 15% of our budget to go to other things. So it's a very tight budget. I do sit on FAB, which is the fiscal advisory body, and we look carefully at these numbers. As my friends here said, it's very tight, and we have to be very careful about our, where the money goes in the future. What can we do about it? Well, I think we need to talk about what in the district is important to us, and of course, for us, it is our teachers. It's the most important thing in the classroom. And so we're not going to even touch that, and they do deserve the STIRS and PIRS going forward. So I think we're just going to have to be very frugal, very diligent in how the budget is spent. Thank you.
Thank you. And finally, Douglas Luftman.
Great, thank you. I think the finance issue highlights one issue that I've heard from when talking to hundreds of parents and community members throughout the, throughout our community. It's transparency. You may not ask yourself today, how much are we deficit spending today? And I would ask the people in the room who would know that answer. It's about $200,000 to $500,000. How much is it going to go up going forward? It's potentially going to go up hundreds, about millions of dollars over the next five to 10 years. I think we need to have enormous amount of transparency to the community for them to better understand what the issue is. And then second, I think it's engagement. It's engagement from the standpoint of getting our community to feel an emotional tie, not just to our specific schools, but to the district and to BCE, and to appreciate that every dollar that goes into BCE or into any other type of donation or fundraising is going to help our district going forward. And then lastly, it's just fiscal discipline. It's looking at ways to actually save money and, at the same time, reaching out to corporate America to see whether or not there are actually resources out there that they're willing to share with us or basically donate to us to help us with any sort of deficit going forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's see, we have a question here about housing, which has come up on all the candidate forums I've done. But the housing crisis has impacted our district's ability to attract and retain teachers. What ideas do you have to address this problem? And we will start with Kay Koski.
So we do know that there is a housing crisis. The city luckily has been working very hard looking at this issue, and we too have been invited to join them and get into the discussion. We do not own land as part of our district, but we do have ideas and good, and good people out there thinking what might be possible. This year, we gave bonuses to some of our teachers, and that did help some, but we cannot, of course, build houses for teachers. We can maybe think about putting out there special housing, if you have housing, at extra, you know, if you have like rooms available perhaps for our teachers. That might be an idea. Thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. Luftman.
Sure. So with regard to housing, as was already mentioned, the district is not in the business of building housing and managing housing. It's just not practical for our district to do. However, it is an absolute priority for the district to own it. And own, basically, how do we help our teachers find appropriate housing locally? So just like in our schools where we want community sites and people engage with the community, we want our teachers to live in our district and to feel close to the community. So a couple of things that I think we can do. I mean, again, this is not a problem that doesn't have potential options for solutions. One is engaging with our community through our landlords and finding out which landlords, instead of donating money, might actually in kind donate perhaps one of their units or at least subsidize their units. It's engaging with our city council to find out whether or not there's actually subsidies that we might be able to consider to incentivize landlords to potentially help there as well. And then lastly, there are county programs and other programs that we could potentially explore that might help with helping teachers find better ways of actually living closer to our district rather than commuting hours each way to teach our children. Thank you.
Thank you. And next, Elizabeth Kendall.
Yeah, this is another really tricky problem that you brought up. It's not fair. I mean, teachers make so little and should be able to live in our communities. It's really not fair. But that said, there are people, we have, people have been looking into it. Other districts have been looking into it. Say, I believe in San Bruno, they're looking at converting a space that they have into teacher housing. We don't have that luxury, but there might be other options here as well. I know the school district has been working with HIP Housing and other resources such as that. Fortunately, we've been able to negotiate salaries. We will keep the salaries as high as we can. As they said, 85% of the budget already goes towards salary, so we could look for other incentives, creating a good culture for teachers to work in, I think is a really strong priority. And then access to transportation is another thing that we can do.
Thank you. And finally, Ms. Drabkin.
Thank you. You know, what's interesting here is one of the first things I learned when I got on the board is that no decision, no action is a no-brainer. Everything you do has a trade-off, be it time put into something, attention from the district, or finances. And so this type of issue, that is a regional issue, it's not unique to our district, every district on the peninsula is facing this. This is the type of issue where we want to come together and work with our sister districts in the county and work with the county office and with our partners at the city to address this. And that's already happening. I know our superintendent Maggie has been working with the city. I've had several city council members reach out to me as well. HIP Housing has been mentioned about helping to find additional space, and the county is looking at how to help make these resources completely accessible. But there's one other thing that's key here, and that is helping our teachers afford the housing options. We want to make sure everyone knows here that over the past six years, that the Burlingame School District has provided 21% raises to our staff and teachers. How many of you have had that? Thank you.
Thank you. Our next question has to do with advanced courses. What's your position on implementing more advanced courses beyond math for challenging higher achieving, achieving students? Mr. Luftman.
Sure. So in talking to parents around the community, the one thing that I've heard over and over again is what happened to our honors program? Now, it's a double-edged sword. On the one hand, studies are suggesting that having the core curriculum and allowing for graduated type of difficulty in the current course load is adequate. The feedback from parents from many students is that it's not. I think what's important is we ask the experts, and I think the experts are our teachers, and I think we should be reaching out to them early and often and really finding out, is it a resource issue that they cannot provide adequate challenging material for advanced students? Or is it actually revisiting basically the advanced workload and seeing whether or not we need further advanced courses? Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Koski.
When you think about advanced courses, you have to look across the whole board of, is it really going to achieve something more than what you're getting when you get to high school? You have to look at the literature and see what the literature says. I like to go to our Assistant Superintendent of Education because they are the experts in that field and find out what the very current literature is, because it does change. And so I would like to go to them and find out what right now do we feel about advanced courses in eighth grade? Because when we get to the high school, you can have as many AP courses as you want. You can almost have six a day if you want, five a day, and some kids do. So I'm not really sure right now until I would speak to the specialists in this area how I feel about this, according to the literature. Thank you.
And Ms. Drabkin.
Yeah. So we, as many parents talked about, used to have more graduated classes, particularly in the middle school. And let me tell you why we changed that a bit, and that was because 98% of our fifth graders were showing up to take the exam for ELA when coming into English Language Arts, when coming to middle school, and they were all doing very well on it. So what it showed us was they're all qualified. I think we need to revisit this as well. When Dennis Hills was here, we had a committee of gate families, teachers, to create a district-wide program. We looked at Palo Alto and Woodside, which are the models here, about forming a district-wide gate option. And what we need to do now is look at more options for differentiation in the classroom. And so I want to point out as well, many of you know, we've just hired a Director of Innovation, and that's a place where I want to ask the Director to focus in partnering with our teachers and partnering with the other staff that we have to figure out how we revisit and make sure that every child is being pushed to the level appropriate. Thank you.
Thank you. And Ms. Kendall.
Yes, in talking with parents, as a parent, and out on the campaign trail, I've heard this come up a lot of times. Many of our students on the CAS score scored very well, especially in math and also English Language Arts. So it does show that we should be having more differentiation in the classroom. I would especially like to look at this one math curriculum. It's sort of a one-size-fits-all kind of curriculum where there are percentage, a large percentage of kids who are just bored and then others who are struggling. I'd like to see us meeting the needs of all the kids in the classroom and taking a second look at that. So I would ask as a board member for us to revisit that set of curriculum. And, yeah, so as a parent, I've heard loud and clear that we would like to have more differentiation in the classroom to meet the needs of all the students.
Thank you. There are a couple of questions asking about the relationship between the city council and the school board and asking for your comments on that relationship, whether it's challenging or how, I guess, how would you just comment on that relationship? Ms. Kendall? Between the city council and school board?
The relationship between the city council and school? Well, I definitely think you should have a good relationship between the city council and the school board. This would be mutually beneficial. I think there were some perhaps struggles last year over the turf issues, but it seems that the, throughout that process, the school board and the city council came together. They worked on this MOU that has a plan going forward. And a thing that I really like in that MOU is that they called out a specific section where once a year, they're all going to get together and talk as a full board and a full council, in addition to the liaison group that they already have. There are so many areas where we should be working together. The schools benefit the property values. You know, we run into the issues with safe, safe passage to school. So you have Hoover where they have challenges with the sidewalk issues. Well, that's a city issue. So the schools need to work closely with, with the city councils to sort out some of these issues, and I hope to have a very strong relationship with the city council.
Thank you. Next, Ms. Drabkin.
Yeah. I appreciate this question. We have a fantastic relationship with the city council. There's times when it gets rocky. There's times when we have hard issues that we need to work out, but I think what really is the thing to look at here is how do we interact and how do we do it? So, yeah, this was a year where we had a lot to talk interact and how do we do it? So, yeah, this was a year where we had a lot to talk about. And I'm going to broaden the topic. It really was a great opportunity to revisit our memorandum of understanding, our MOU. And we did. And the result, after good discussion, passion, passion that shows how much every member, and I think they're all here tonight on the city council and the members of the school board care about this community. We came to a fantastic solution. And Anne, I hope I don't embarrass you, but I want to give a good example here. It also was an opportunity for us to revisit how our personal communication happens. And me personally, I had the opportunity to have some really deep conversations with Anne, and I'm thrilled what's come out of it. I'll stop there.
Thank you. Next, Mr. Lufman?
Great. I agree with what everyone said regarding good relationships are obviously important. And I think we have actually a good relationship with the city. I think a couple of things that we could do to probably improve it even more. One is transparency. I love watching, basically, city council meetings via video conference. You can watch it online, stream it, and know exactly what's going on. Unfortunately, the school board has audio taping. It's not available to anyone, and the minutes are typically very, shall we say, are paraphrased. And therefore, it's very difficult to know what's going on in the district. So, I think it's enormously important to be very clear, what are we doing in the school district and where are we going going forward? In addition to that, I think the turf was a good example. I think we surprised the city on the turf, even though I think we gave them some advanced notice. I don't think we appreciated the cadence as it relates to what their budgetary constraints were and when. So, I think it's, again, part of that dialogue of going through the liaison committee and starting the conversation there and then having more regular school board, city council meetings. Currently, we only have one a year, and I've been a big proponent of actually saying, you know what, why don't we actually schedule them semi-annually, quarterly, whatever it might be that actually works and actually ensure that's on the calendar now for the rest of the school year. Thank you.
Thank you. And finally, Ms. Kosky.
So, being in, living in Burlingame for twenty-four years, I've formed relationships with many of these council members for many years. So, I know their background. I know their dedication to our city. That makes my relationship with them very strong because I know the hard work that they do and I know the hard work that our board does. So, we have a lot of mutual issues that we discuss throughout the year. Just a couple to mention: safety, housing, and other issues. Turf was mentioned. And I believe that we have to continue working hard to build our relationship. And I do agree with many of our candidates here that we have a very good relationship, and I'm real proud of that. Let's keep that going. Thank you.
Thank you. There's some other questions, I guess, have to do particularly with students. One in five students has a language-based learning disability. Dyslexia is the most common. Will you work toward expanding services to students to include teachers who have experience in helping dyslexic children? And let's start with Ms. Grabkin.
Okay. So, many of you may be aware that there's new state law requirement that's come out around dyslexia. And we've had, we've had folks from our district go to a dyslexia training, and we're currently in the process of setting up training for the rest of our teachers. So, it's not just about specialists. It's making sure that all of our teachers are able to provide that level of differentiation and support in the classroom. And that is something that we've had particular different members of the school board really push for. And in working, our superintendent, in working with teachers and different site leaders, so principals and the site leadership at the schools, is something that we're looking at. In fact, just the other night, we were talking about setting up a committee between principals, our special education specialists, and teachers to figure out the best way to go about training all of our teachers and the best way to provide training for our students in this area.
Thank you. And let's see, next, Mr. Lufman?
Great. So, this is actually an issue near and dear to my heart. My daughter has a learning difference, and she was diagnosed in fourth grade with it. My experience in the district since her being diagnosed was, shall we say, challenging. And I sympathize with everyone with a learning difference, or a child with a learning difference in the district that struggles with it as well. Everything from, do I get an IP? Do I get a 504? If I get an IP, what does that mean? Where do I get the resources? So, over the last year and a half since being on the board, I've been pushing for some simple things like getting a website, which unfortunately took two years to get, which I think was unacceptable. In addition to that, I think it's professional training for the teachers, which I've consistently asked for more training. So, I think it's more professional development. And I think it's also auditing, basically, the way that we deal with special education today. Unfortunately, we had a Director of Special Education that was ineffective for two years, which I attempted to try to get to step up to the occasion. Unfortunately, it was not effective, and she decided to leave on her own accord after two years. So, I think we have a great opportunity going forward to actually get someone in that actually is very specialized in this area and really push for, basically, standard special education services for everybody.
Thank you. And Ms. Kosky?
So, I'm very excited for these new guidelines to come out. I think many of our special ed teachers, our regular teachers, our parents needed these guidelines to help learn, to diagnose, to assist the, to identify, I should say, the problems with dyslexia and who has this. So, I believe that our district will be working very carefully to try to get the proper instruction for all of our teachers to learn how to use this new tool for us. I'm excited to learn myself because I think a lot of this will really help many of our students, as you mentioned, Doug. Thank you.
Thank you. And finally, Ms. Kendall?
Yes. So, with respect to the new dyslexia guidelines themselves, a recent document came out in August. And when you look through it, you see that it is complicated and challenging to learn. It's very important. But I do see that it will take us some time to implement. And it sounds, I think the district will emphasize this, and it should be emphasized, that the teachers need to be trained in this new way of looking at things. So, that is very important. A concern I have surrounding special education right now is the need for more communication. The way that the special education community was not entirely aware at the beginning of the year that there was a transition from the woman who departed at the beginning of the year. And now, again, we're in a state of transition. I would like to see better communication for the special education group. They are a community, and they need to be treated in that way.
Thank you. Let's see, there are so many questions here, really good questions. We could go on all night, but we're not going to. We do have a time limit. So, the next question, what is the role of the board in shaping policy? And how would you intend to work with professional staff to align goals and results? And we'll start with Kay Kosky.
Okay.
It's kind of a complicated one.
Yes. The role of the board for shaping policy. So, the role of our board is to shape policy. So, we do not manage our sites. What we do is we get information and we carry on through our district to carry out the best that we can do for our district, and that is shaping policy. I'm sorry, what was the second part?
It's a long question.
How would you work with professional staff to align the goals and results in the policy?
Yes, thank you, Jackie. I think it's really important that we do work with our staff because they are the ones on the front line that really know what's going on. So, I think once we, once we talk about the communication more with our teachers in the classroom, as far as the teachers with our district office and with us, I think it's a really complicated thing, but we need to definitely work together to shape policy for our district.
Thank you. And let's see, Elizabeth Kendall, next.
Yes. So, as Kay said, the role of the board is to define the policy and set the direction for our school district. But that needs to be done by meeting the needs of the community. So, I think what's missing here is that we need to engage the community and find out what is, what are the priorities that need to be set, both the parent community and the teacher community, and anyone else who's involved in the school district. So, once we meet those, once we find out what the priorities are for the community, then you set the goals and the policies. The school board itself does not implement these policies and goals, so that's not their role. You work closely with the superintendent and make sure there are proper structures in place so that these policies and goals are flowing down throughout the system. But they're set based on community input. So, the school board provides that liaison between the community and the superintendent to set the goals.
Thank you. And next, Ms. Grabkin.
Yeah. So, a number of my colleagues here, both Elizabeth and Kay, have emphasized the importance of the, of the school board setting policy. But we also set direction, and one way we do that is by creating effective and efficient structures. So, this comment about making sure that we reflect the values and the beliefs and priorities of our community, of course. And one way that we have been doing that is, for example, when we were developing our LCAP, we had town halls at multiple locations, multiple times throughout the year to ask teachers, to ask parents, to ask community members to provide feedback. We have PTA meetings. We have site councils to do this. So, how to make sure that we, of all of our professional staff, I'm glad that people realize that, of course, we need to do that. We typically do that through either working through our structures, like on the site council, or setting up a committee, a task force, to look at particular issues here. The other thing I think that's really important to highlight here is the need for accountability. We, as a board, must provide that too.
Thank you. And finally, Mr. Lufman?
Okay. So, I love the formal answer that, basically, we are responsible for policy. Now, here's the challenge with that. The policies that we change are, basically, foreign policies that the California State Board Association gives us and we amend. That is the most that we do about policy. We don't, I believe, have enough discussion about actual policies that are beyond that. And I think of the policies that we have, we say that we follow them, and then suddenly we learn different things. For example, we already heard, special education. Officially, our policy is being followed, but it's not, and we need to, basically, address it. Officially, Swan Math is a great curriculum, but there are issues, and we should actually probably look into it further. Officially, teachers are happy, but we're hearing that, basically, the teachers are feeling disconnected and are not feeling heard and are not feeling, basically, appreciated. So, I think with regard to policy, the responsibility of the board is also to see that the policies are actually being properly implemented and revisited. And this is not to suggest that anyone is doing anything wrong. I think it's a healthy feedback loop of always looking at policies and seeing whether the operational implementation of it is actually correct. And I think it's very important this year in particular for the board revisit our policies and whether or not they're actually being accurately followed and whether or not they're being accurately achieved. Thank you.
Thank you. Again, let's see. How would you, what do you think is working well in our district? And could you cite anything what you think could be improved? And we'll start with Mr. Lufman.
Wow, okay. After that, that's actually been perfect timing because this is not to suggest that the fire, our hair is on fire in our district. We have an amazing district. We should be really happy with where we're at. But the important thing is always to self-evaluate it and see where is it that we can actually improve. And we've heard areas that need to be improved and we should focus on. It's everything from hearing about bullying at BIS. It's about hearing that is social-emotional learning being effectively implemented at the elementary school level. It's about special education, which I won't repeat again. You've already heard my, we need to look at it. It's about curriculum. So, I think there's a lot of things that we can evaluate. And here's the beauty. This is just my opinion. I think the most important thing right now is actually go back out to the community, revisit, basically, the school site surveys that have already been done, perhaps even generate additional school site surveys, and see where is it that things are working, where is it that things aren't working. And most importantly, I think it's asking the teachers, they're the front line, and they're the ones that actually know how things are, what things are doing, what things are going right and wrong. And we should really look to them as really our number-one experts. Thank you.
Thank you. And Ms. Kosky?
So, what I think we are doing well, I'd like to go with the positives first because I am really excited about our district. I think that we are in a wonderful district. And so, I'm going to start with the positives. I believe that we are narrowing the achievement gap in our district. We have a ways to go, but we're working on trying to get equity across the whole board, across for every single child. So, I think that is a great thing that we've been working on. Our VAPA, which is our Visual Unperforming Arts, has been added into our curriculum just a few, you know, a few years ago. And I believe that that's wonderful because that's helpful for all of our kids. And also, I also think our class sizes are remaining small with the great donations that we get. Thank you.
Thank you. And let's see, Ms. Kendall?
Okay. There's a lot of great things going on in our school. I mean, that's why many of us moved here. We love these schools. Our CAF scores were actually quite good. We have teachers who are connected to the school. We have really dedicated parents. There's a lot, there's a lot that's great. What could be improved? The main thing I see is a need for improved communication. I see this as a parent in elementary school. I see places where we have awesome policy that's not really hitting the ground level. I could talk about maybe yard duty. So, in the last year, I worked with Measure M funding, how that was spent out. Washington has four portable units, and it didn't seem that that was the highest priority on the Measure M spending list. I think that there was a gap in communication. There was some ill will that happened last year that could have been avoided with more communication. I think we need to have very clear communication channels and so we all understand what's going on. The roads ahead is not going to be easy, but we should know why we're making the choices we're making.
Thank you. And Ms. Grabkin?
I love this question. There are so many things I could say. The minute is not nearly enough. So, I'm going to focus on one or two things here. People have heard me tell this story before, and this is one of my favorites. When I first started on the board, I heard from Pam Scott, the principal of this school, that she could sit in a class of sixth graders, and if not before, at least by the end of the class, tell you not only what elementary school that child had come from, what teacher that child had at that school. Now, think about that for a moment. That says a lot of different things. It means that our students were having a wide variety of experiences in middle school, and it also presented challenges for our sixth-grade teachers in particular. If students are coming in at such different levels, where do you start and what do you do? So, one of our biggest achievements over that time is to really shift from being a district of schools to being a cohesive school district. And one of the key things that we did to do that was really becoming a data-driven school district. So, not just I feel and I think and I want, but using data to make decisions.
Thank you. We have a couple of questions that have to do with teachers and parents, and I think the interaction between the parents and the school community. So, one of the questions is, how do you plan to solicit feedback from the teacher and parent community? And someone brings up, I guess, there's a school liaisons that they feel like they haven't been, they don't know much about. But so, I think they're kind of related as far as, you know, the two, the two questions. So, what, how would you plan to solicit feedback from the teacher and parent community? And let's start with Ms. Kendall.
Yes. So, my biggest priority is to have open channels of communication and to improve communication within our district. What I would personally do is I would go to a PTA meeting at each school each year and hear what's going on. I would meet with as many people as I could. That was reasonable. And I would also meet with the, with the teachers. So, the, I would also like to have some, try some novel things like hang out in Il Piccolo on a Saturday and say, come and tell me about, you know, what's, how's it going with the district? I'd like to set up some more informal ways to approach a school board member that it might be hard for a parent to do with a blue slip in a very formal setting. And then beyond that with communication, I'd like to extend it broader and talk with other districts about how they are handling these challenging problems. We are not unique. These problems exist in every district, and the other districts have found creative approaches, and we should be sharing the lessons learned across them.
Thank you. And next, Ms. Grabkin?
Yeah. So, I think one of the key things that I've learned in going out and talking with, my goodness, hundreds of people over the past number of weeks, is that it's time to revisit some of the structures and processes that we have in place. So, again, earlier on, one thing that was really hard was for parents to know what was going to be going on at a school board meeting and what was the result. And what we did shortly after Maggie came on was implement an email communication. So, now you can sign up and you can easily get delivered into your mailbox what's going on and what the results were. But it's time to revisit that. We're at an inflection point where we need to look from moving from the push of information to getting more to a pull in a collaborative way of doing this. So, I've, the school liaisons, that's the idea that there's a school board member who is a particular liaison to each school. I think we do need to revamp that idea and as a, as a leadership team, talk about ways to make people, give them the opportunity to be more involved. But I also want to ask our community, we've tried town halls, we've tried all sorts of things. What do you want?
Thank you. And Mr. Lufman?
Boy, we keep hearing a lot about that there's a lot of hard things in the district, and I actually just overall completely disagree that a lot of these things that we're talking about tonight are hard. What I think it is, is actually focus and perseverance and thinking outside the box. And let's just talk about, basically, the teacher-parent discussion. We have the infrastructure in place. We've got school site council for, basically, what's going on with the schools. We've got PTAs as to what the parent-teacher relationship is. We have DCE. We have district committees for different topics. We have school board meetings that, basically, could be rotated to NPRs of all the different schools, which will actually provide additional attention. We've got teachers who are willing to give feedback. What we need to do is one simple thing, listen. And not just listen, but then hear what they have to say, react to it, and then provide the feedback that we're listening to it. And I, and from all the feedback that I've been getting throughout the community over the last two months, it is clear that people are engaged and want to be engaged, but don't feel like the district is listening. And I think that's a number-one priority, is we have a lot of people that have a lot of information at their disposal that could really help all of us. And rather than feeling that we're the ones that know everything, we should be that we're the ones that know everything, we should be listening to those that are most, the subject matter experts. Thank you.
Thank you. And finally, Ms. Kosky.
Well, I think everyone has said quite a bit here. I like to say I agree with everyone. What I do personally is I go and tour the schools, every school twice a year, and I speak with the principals, and I also go to PTA meetings to hear what's going on there. I also visit with a lot of our parents when we have events. Showing up at events, I can find out what the needs are in our community. So, I do hear a lot of feedback. As far as the email communication, I'm not sure if everyone has signed up for that. It's there, and you can find out about what's going on all the time if you sign up, but I'm not sure everyone really signs up for that. So, maybe you want to go and look on the website. But as far as feedback, I agree with Doug. We have to continue listening and find better ways to solicit this information between the two groups. Thank you.
Okay. All right. We still have lots of questions and not that much time, so. What do you think is the most important factor in our child's education? And how do you think you could improve or support that factor? And Ms. Drapkin.
Yeah. As I was preparing for tonight too, I was really thinking about this. Well, this one really is a no-brainer. It's our teachers. They are the folks that are interacting with our students every day. And if you, again, think back to different teachers that you've had and inspired you, those are the people that have the expertise in the classroom, know how to make you feel that you can try something and take, take a step in something that maybe is new or different and grow. So, we need to make sure that we are supporting our teachers. Now, you might get the impression from everything you've heard tonight that teachers are a unified voice. Let me tell you, they're not. They're experts in so many different ways, and there's lots of different opinions about how to go about something. So, this is again about making sure that we are having people work in teams, that we are having people collaborate with other, the other professional staff that we have, with the leadership at the districts to find a commonality of our approach.
Thank you. Ms. Kendall.
Yes, I agree that teachers are incredibly important for our children in the schools. I mean, this is who they're with all day long, and that's who's shaping them. So, so to go to the next topic, what else is incredibly important for them is that they're in a safe and healthy environment, that their social-emotional needs are met. They need to feel at ease and comfortable in their classrooms. So, we, they do this Healthy Kids Survey every couple of years, and for the most part, our students do very well. But you'll see that there are concerns, especially in middle school. Significant number of kids have felt, experienced bullying. They have felt threatened at different times. While we're, while I would say we're doing well, I think we could improve, and I would like to work on that aspect. What could we do to make it a safer, healthy environment for both the children and the teachers? Maybe with counselors, we could do counselor interns. There are programs that we could reach out to, especially that have been piloted already by other districts. There are a number of steps we could take, and I think that's another important factor for the well-being of the child.
Thank you. And Ms. Kosky.
So, no surprise, I do believe our teachers are the number one thing that we need to recognize and, and also support. Let's talk about support for our teachers. I think that we like to support our teachers, of course, door raises. It was mentioned that they've received 21% in the last six years. That is good. I also think that we need to continue our professional development and offer them support for advancement in their careers. So, I think when you think about the most important thing for kids is, is the, what's going on in the classroom, the material in the classroom, and the surrounding, the safety of our classrooms, which I'm really proud that we're working on the facilities from the bond. So, that would be my number one. Thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. Luffman.
Yeah, on this one, it goes back to, it's all about the kids and then dot-dot-dot, and the teachers. And what I mean by that is that happy teachers will make happy kids. If the teachers are happy, they feel secure, and we keep them, we will have basically less uncertainty in the district. So, for example, at BIS, we have a sub problem. We have too many subs in BIS, and therefore, kids are feeling anxiety because they're not having a consistent teacher. I'm not sure how far it goes through the rest of the district, but I think that's something we need to look at to ensure that the teachers that we have and that we want to keep are retained however we can. In addition to that, I think professional development. We help our teachers better deal with all the things that they're facing in the classroom and listen to them again, to hear what else do they need in order to support our kids and support the learning environment. In addition to that, I think a career path. How many times have we heard about basically a career path for our teachers from becoming a, a potential assistant principal or principal? And what type of professional do we have in order to tee them up? And then do we have a policy of hiring from within? I'm very happy that one of our principals was basically hired as a teacher from, as, one of our principals was originally a teacher. And I think that's important to set that tone going forward, and that will flow through all the kids as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, so the, so we can end on time. This is going to be our last question. It's, and so it goes a little bit differently, says, what do you think about upgrading to ECO 100 and going all greenhouse, gas-free, and renewables? Just a different aspect. Ms. Kosky.
Well, as you know, we recently went solar on our schools. That cost about $2 million. We took that from the bond, and we are trying to get in about $200,000 to $300,000 a year. So, we will be looking at a cost savings down the road. So, that was a big step for us. I have to thank one of our veteran board members, Michael Barber, who was instrumental and really pushed us for the solar, and of course, I'm very excited for it too. Upgrading to ECO 100, our staff has looked into this, and they feel that at this time it would be a little bit too much for us to go that direction, but I'm definitely open to hear more about it and find out how we can continue being more green and have some more cost savings. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Mr. Luffman.
Sure. I think we should go to ECO 100 if it's financially viable. The challenge to date has been that it has not been looked into as much as it should. I asked probably about a month ago for actually the information. Right now, we're at ECO 50, which basically means that we are using our solar panels for most of the day, and then when we can't, we go to ECO 50. ECO 100 means 100% green. I think if it is a couple thousand dollars a year, it's a no-brainer. We should do it. Unfortunately, right now, the data has not come back yet, and I'm still waiting for it from the district as relates to what is the actual cost for ECO 100 in order to go to it. Thank you.
And next, Ms. Kendall.
So, as has been said, it's, I think everyone would love to. It's a matter of cost, and in this situation, it's always complicated by how much can you do with the budget you have? I do, some of the things I do like that we're doing in our school system is the increased emphasis on composting and sorting. The children are all learning how to sort all their waste. I think we're teaching them very valuable skills and how to reduce. We've been teaching them about the environment, and recently Jim Cannon came and spoke to the school board about how to work at a county level with the county on environmental issues. They're thinking of creating environmental spaces on the Bay Shore that perhaps the children could use for day trips or for an overnight to learn about the environment and how to respect our planet. I think this is incredibly important, and we need to be teaching these lessons to our children.
Thank you. And finally, Ms. Drapkin.
Okay. Well, I actually did get the same data that all the sitting board members got, and this data, this, this has thoroughly been looked into, and we have an answer. And so, what I want to point out to you is that unlike the city, for example, we own a number of our facilities. We've got schools all around the city here. And what we've been able to do because of that is actually put in solar panels. So, we don't necessarily need to look at the most green option for the little bit of energy that we are using that isn't generated by our solo panels. What we looked into is, we haven't had our solar panels online for a year. We don't have data back, there's no way we could, as to what our actual usage is at the moment. So, actually, if you look at what we're doing, we are doing something more green than, than the city even is, with all due respect, just because of the nature of the fact that we own our facilities. So, one thing that we really need to realize when you sit on the school board is every time you send staff off to do a deeper analysis, that is an opportunity cost. You are taking them away from the other priorities that we have set.
Thank you. Now, every kid, this, our average candidate, we, like I say, we still have a whole lot of questions here, but now it's time for our closing statements. Each candidate will have two minutes for a closing statement, and we always reverse the order from that of the opening statements. So, we will begin with Davina Drapkin.
That's me. All right. Well, you know, I prepared for tonight, and a friend of mine recommended that I think about summarizing my message into one sentence. And so, how I could take all the different things that I stand for and whittle that down to a catchphrase? Well, I did a Google search, and I found, strong on education, math and success add up. Started to think of some of my own, excellence and innovation, the experience to move Burlingame forward. And then I started to think about kids who've gone through our district or maybe are still here. There's Rachel. She just graduated from UC Berkeley last year. While she was there, she was editor of the Daily Cal Blog. Now, she works for Emerge America and recruits and trains Democratic women to run for office. There's Adam. He's about to graduate from BHS at the end of this year. He's the senior programmer on the robotics team there, and he's mentoring freshmen and sophomores. Sam, as a seventh grader here at BIS last year, she was a peer mentor in math. She's thinking about becoming a teacher. Kyla and Luna, they are in the Spanish immersion program at McKinley, and they easily go back and forth, reading in English or Spanish. I'm proud of these kids. I'm proud of all of our kids, and you should be too. I was on my bike, stopped at a red light, thinking about these kids when a bus went by, and on the side of the bus, it said, "An education should build connections, not require them." Simple, yet profound. An education should build connections, connections to math, science, social studies, curiosity of learning, to school, your peers, your teachers, your community, to engage, inspire, empower, and motivate you, to support you, and to be there when you need help. And for me, and for my friend here, Kay, working as a team for the past four years on the school board, because we know that working together, we are so much greater than the individual sum of our parts. So, that's it. When you go to vote, think of my one-sentence message, "An education should build connections." Thank you.
Thank you. And next is Elizabeth Kendall. Two minutes.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you tonight, and thank you all for coming out here. It's really great. So, I'm really excited to work on the school board and to make our schools even better. Those of you who know me well will know that I am more of a listener than a talker. But this, these past couple of months on the campaign trail have been really amazing. It's been such a good opportunity to speak with so many people. I've heard a number of insightful questions and, and thoughts that, that really made me think. I've been proud to be a citizen of Burlingame. I've made myself accessible at events, at coffee shops, at donut shops, online, and I plan to continue that accessibility as a school board member. The school board's job is to set the goals and priorities of the district, but they need to meet the needs of the community and respond to what the community wants. So, I'm the only candidate running with children in elementary school. We need a parent with children, with young children on the board. There's just no other way you're going to get that boots-on-the-ground perspective. This is also a great time to have a scientist on the board as the next generation's science standards are being implemented. As a scientist, I'm curious, I'm open-minded, I'm used to collaborating on large teams and coming to a consensus. I'm also data-driven. So, my top priorities for the board are, again, open communication channels at every level, so every voice can be heard, ensuring that we have the best curriculum in place, and providing our teachers with the supports that they need so that they can carry out that incredibly important job they have. We want to ensure that we have safe and healthy schools at all sites for all students. I've been endorsed by Jerry Hill, the teachers of the Burlingame, of Burlingame, four out of five council members, high school district trustees, former Burlingame School District trustees. And while we need experienced members on the board, we also need a fresh perspective, and I provide that new voice. I am the right person for the job, and I hope that I will earn your vote.
Thank you. Next, Douglas Luffman.
Thank you. As I've spoken to hundreds of parents and community members over this campaign, the one question that I've often been asked was, why am I running to continue to serve on the Burlingame School Board? A position that is not only unpaid, potentially emotionally charged, but also a huge time commitment. I initially provided the sort of answer that you'd expect. I want to serve my community. I am passionate about helping kids because I have a son who is actually at BIS. I'm an electrical engineer, a lawyer, and a Silicon Valley tech executive, so I just love a new challenge. My mom was my inspiration, was a high school, public school teacher and a principal, and so I have that public DNA inside of me. However, as our discussion progressed, I realized that my desire to want to continue to serve is more basic than that. In everything that I do, I have a strong need to leave things better than I found them. As a parent of a child currently attending our schools, this desire is further magnified. As a board member, I've had a huge appetite to help support facilitate exponential forward progress in our schools. The desire to leave things better than we have found them is admittedly not unique to just me. The energy level is something that is clearly evident throughout our community. It's clear that we all would like, that we would do anything for our children. What also is clear is that our community wants to also support our friends' children, our neighbors' children, and our community's children. The exciting opportunity before us is that our community is ready to further engage with our school district to help take our district to the next level of greatness. We just need to explore new ways to use the resources that are potentially available to us and find efficient ways to leverage them to ensure schools not only continue to be good, but undeniably great. In closing, I feel honored to be involved in this election, which is the first time in over a decade our community can choose who is our next school board members. I also am touched by this being the first election that our teachers feel that they have a voice, where they can publicly endorse school board candidates who they feel would most effectively support them and be effective in the school district. I truly am excited at the opportunity to help continue to make a difference, to further energize the potential in our community, to help and to continue to serve our district as one of our school board members. We have exciting days ahead of us where we have the opportunity to further engage our students, our teachers, our staff, our administrators, our parents, our community members, our local businesses, and our corporations to rally around the mantra that it's all about the kids. Thank you.
Thank you. And next, last is Kay Kosky.
Well, first, I'd like to thank the League of Voters and our PTA Council and the audience and our camera folks back there from the high school. This has been a wonderful night. You see the community that we live in. I'm excited to be here, and I'm excited to be on this board. I keep our kids in the center of every decision that I make on the board. That's probably the most important thing to me. Having the kids go through the district and now going on, it just makes me really happy to see the good outcome that we've gotten from our excellent Burlingame schools. I believe that I've been an asset on this board for many reasons. I feel like I'm a very good community builder and team builder, and I enjoy working with the whole group. My decision is one of five, and I think that as a board member, you need to know that we all work together to come to our final answers. Not one of us, but all of us, all of our voices make, make it right. So, I want to say, I get this district. I have been in this district for 14 years, 10 of them heavily volunteering, four on the board. I have had kids go through here, and now I have kids who are still in the public school and, of course, in college. I plan to continue my professional development, which I think is very important for not only our teachers, our staff, but myself. I need to learn about how to act appropriately on the board, how the board works, and what's new in education. So I'm finishing the Masters in Governance through the California School Board, and also I enjoy going to CSBA conferences. You get three votes on November 7th. I would be honored to just receive one of them. Thank you.
Thank you. Before we thank the candidates, I'd like to put in a pitch for the League of Women Voters. And as I said before, we're a nonpartisan political organization. We have both men and women. Actually, we let bin in in 1974, decided they needed to be educated too, so. But if you're interested in helping with events like this, I encourage you to get information about the League. You can find things on our website, and I would ask you to check our Voters Edge website. It's votersedge.org. It used to be Smart Voter, but all the candidates have been invited to put their information up, and I hope they have, because they can also link to their own websites, remind you to vote on Tuesday, November 7th, if you haven't done it, you know, don't, send it in by absentee, but, and encourage other people to vote as well. So now, it's time for us to applaud and thank our candidates for coming.[1732.51][1732.51][applause] And I'd just like to say, I think it takes a lot of courage to run for office, and so I think they really deserve special thanks for putting themselves out. How do we undo this?